Call to order. The regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, March 2, 2021. But the records show they were missing one commissioner, Commissioner Oderman. First item up is the Order of Business, Mr. Winningham. Are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. There's no change to the agenda?
There are no changes to the Order of Business. Look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Motion approved.
There are a motion to approve the Order of Business by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any discussion on the Order of Business? All in favor of the Order of Business as presented? State aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss with staff? Hearing no concerns. Look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla, the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Out will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move right into Administration and Finance. First item up is our year-end financial report, and that'll be handled by City Accountant, Mr. Maury.
Good evening.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So before I get started here, I just want to let the public know the reason that we're doing this report today, even though we'd already done the year-end report at the second meeting in January, is because this is to keep us in compliance with North Dakota Sentry Code. We don't actually close out, or I should say, stop taking invoices in our 2020 budget until February 15th. So after that deadline, this is when we can present that finalized information to the So this PowerPoint I have for you is basically a summary of the year-end fund balance report, which is what we're required by Sentry Code to submit. So I took some of the highlights from that report to present in this PowerPoint. So this first slide here, this shows our general fund budget versus actual. So you can see on our budget ordinance, we were at about 20.3 million and ended up spending about just under 18.5 million. And on this next slide here, you'll see that we balanced the general fund then by lowering our oil impact transfer. We lowered that down to about 2 million, so our general fund revenues balanced with our general fund expenses in 2020. These are our special revenue funds. These are items such as sales tax, future fund, oil impact, as you can see there. Also on this slide, you can tell from our 2020 budget ordinance, everything was under budget in our special revenue funds. We did do a reforecast in midsummer, as you're all aware, so that's a big reason why we were able to stay ahead in all these funds and make sure that we didn't go over budget. So as you can see in this next slide here, so this is our variance report showing some of those reforecast revenues. We did get less than we thought, so our reforecast expenses lowered some of those expenses. We still had some expenses over revenues in most of these funds, as you can see, but we did finish under budget in all of the funds. Then moving on to our enterprise funds. So the only fund that's over budget on here is our water fund, which we will discuss in the amendments and encumbrances part of this presentation. You can see everything else was under budget. We only have the one amendment, I believe, that we are asking for in the water fund. And then revenues over expenses. So you can see here, too, some of the revenues are higher than the expenses. We do have some requirements to transfer money for debt service requirements for our SRF loans, items like that. So some of these, we are required to keep a cash balance. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the 2020 fund balance and the year-end financial report? The only question I would have is, and this might be for Mrs. Carlson, the projections for the upcoming year for our oil revenue? When does the legislature, when do they hear that? And then we'll get that. They usually get a report, and then we get a report for the...
Right.
Was that mid-March?
I think it'll be actually during the work session that they're going to have. Then they'll be making a projection of what they feel that the oil will be.
OMB will be?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have a pretty good idea where we're sitting.
And I did keep the revenues at the same reforecasting amount for the budget for '21, just for that fact. Just like Accountant Maury did say, our reforecasting was pretty low. We did come in higher with the actuals, but we did come lower in our original budget.
There any other questions or comments for staff? If not, I'd look for a motion on the year-end financial report.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is the 2020 amendment and encumbrances.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Also for the public, I'd like to mention the reason we do this is to present to the Commission anything that we had, or any place, I should say, where we had unexpected expenses. So like, we'll talk about the water expense in just a moment here, and then also encumbrances is for any funds that we have budgeted in 2020 that weren't able to be spent in 2020, is to bring to the Commission and ask that we can move those forward to 2021 to spend them, as long as we are under budget, which, as you previously saw, that we are. So starting with our only 2020 budget amendment, this is our water cost from the Southwest Water Authority. So the reason for this amendment, so we budgeted 4.7 million in our water cost. At the time, we didn't have the increase that was brought in, I believe, November by Southwest Water Authority. So when that was brought in, and Ms. Carlson can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was 27 cents. So with that, that raised us between 250 and 300,000 over budget. And then we also, due to possibly, you know, drier conditions, but we did have an increased demand in water and sold, or excuse me, bought more water that we then ended up selling, we actually bought 144 million gallons more water than what we projected. We projected 900 million. We sold 144 million more than that, or excuse me, bought 144 million more than that. So that's the reason that we're bringing this amendment to the Commission.
Are there any questions for Mr. Maury on this amendment? Has Southwest Water given us their rate for next year already? Or an idea?
No.
Have we had any talks, Mr. Winningham, with Southwest Water on their, if they are coming with a big increase again?
President Decker and Commissioners, I haven't received an update officially from Southwest Water. They did have their annual meeting recently, and so I'm expecting to hear back from their
Thank you. Moving on to our encumbrances then, so as I just mentioned again, for the public, so we do this for any funding that we had approved in 2020 that wasn't able to be spent in 2020. So this is where we're asking for the Commission to approve some of these dollars to be moved into the 2021 budget. The first one I have here is cat kennel upgrades for the animal shelter. We had an amount budgeted that we had about, as you can see, about six, between 6,000 and 7,000 remaining. We're asking for that remaining budget amount to be moved to 2021 in order to finish those cat kennel upgrades. The next list I have here is for the museum. So the museum has building repairs of 2,200 that they had in the 2020 budget for part of the South Heart Depot restoration. They're asking to move the remaining amount that they had left to finish that work in 2021. In the fieldwork line, they had 13,300 left for extraction expenses that they believe they will need in 2021 instead of 2020. The technology line of 4,000, that is for security upgrades that they had budgeted but were not able to be completed due to timing. And then the last item there, the $5,000, they had sculptures that they ordered from Serbia that were delayed due to COVID. They would still like to purchase those in 2021. In Forest Street, we had 25,000 budgeted for a trailer with cones. We spent 10,000 on the trailer in 2020, but the remaining for the installation of those cones that are still being, they're still a work in process, so we're asking for the remaining dollars to be encumbered to 2021 to finish that vehicle, or excuse me, that And then moving on to the Police Department. So in travel and training, they had planned on having simunition training. This also, due to COVID, could not be completed in 2020, so we're asking for those dollars to be moved to 2021. The Southwest Tactical Team has about $570 remaining that they wanted to use on tactical lights that couldn't be invoiced until they were shipped. With them being shipped in 2021, we're asking for those dollars to be moved to 2021 as well. And then the last one for PD here, 5,000 for equipment. That is for mobile radios that were part of the siren project. Chief Dossinger can correct me if I'm wrong here, but we had the vehicles purchased in 2020, and this 5,000 is just to finish the installation of those radios in 2021.
That is correct. We had difficulty scheduling the installation with the vendor due to a backlog, so the installation had to be completed in '21.
And then the final encumbrance I have for the Commission is the wastewater plant for a rotating drum thickener. And this is a project that was approved in the 2020 budget that will not be able to be done until 2021. So with that, I will do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Maury. Are there any questions for city staff on the amendment and the encumbrances? Not this is Resolution 07-2021, if I'm correct? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on 07-2021.
I'd move to approve the 2020 amendment and encumbrances.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the amendment and the encumbrances.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into Item C here, and we have City Assessor Hirschfeld, and he has a date for us.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Getting to be that time again for Board of Equalization. New law from the last session has the auditor putting out the, before the April meetings, within consecutive dates that we have to notice when the meeting's going to be. So instead of, like we've done in the past, setting a date and noticing ourselves, and we're coming before you today to see if we can get that date set, let the auditor's office know over at Stark County so that they can notice those, and we'll be all set then for Board of Equalization season.
All right. So you're looking, Ms. Hirschfeld, you're looking for that week of April 12th? Is that what you're looking for?
That would be Assessing's preference. That gives us a little extra time then to finish the work up this year. We'd like to have that with COVID and everything. We expect there'll be a few questions maybe generated from that. We have also had some of the abatements that have been pushed back. We've decided to hold it on that date, those last three abatements, instead of trying to schedule a meeting just for that or to incorporate it in another commission meeting. We'll just put it all together. So that just gives us another week then to make sure we're prepared for that and for anything else that we might need to address with the public before that.
Commissioners, I guess, check your calendars for that.
I'd prefer the 12th through the 15th, if possible.
It's Tax Day. I'm not gonna call. No. I'm pretty open that week. It doesn't matter to me either.
Does the 15th work? 15th, I guess it is.
Evening meeting, 4:30 meeting, like typical, you want to go morning? We can do whatever we like that day, so.
I guess we had our, better start about four. How many people are you anticipating?
I'm hoping it's a light attendance. The way sales are looking, we're not looking at this time, of course, I'll know more in two weeks for you, but at this time, we're not looking at making any increases other than any revaluations that were done on the residential side, if any, and new permits or any new construction, those kind of things. About the only increases we might be looking to put on, so we're hoping for a light attendance.
So nothing from apartments or, I mean, we're always going to get something for apartments, but no increase to apartment buildings or commercial property?
At this time, we're not looking to recommend an increase, no.
I would say then we just go with 4 o'clock, if that's okay with everybody? 4 o'clock?
And I guess I apologize. If it's an evening meeting, then any evening works for me. I have daytime meetings, Tuesday, Wednesday, but I don't know if that changes.
You still want to stick with 15th? I'm fine.
I'm going.
15th at 4 o'clock. Commissioner Frederick is just going to take a beating twice that day, taxes, huh?
Yeah. It'll be always. Very good. April 15th at 4:00 PM then.
That'll work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item up is City Administrator Winningham. He has a few items that Commissioners might want to attend. I know I plan on it, but...
So, Mr. President, Commissioners, the first one up is the North Dakota League of Cities. It's the Spring Workshop for Elected and Appointed Officials. If you've read through some of the documents that are posted there, it also allows for some training for elected officials, gives an opportunity to meet with your peers throughout other cities and get credit for some leadership training. That'll be hosted at the RamCoda in Bismarck from April 20th to April 21st. The second event that's upcoming is a Williston Basin Petroleum Conference. That has been, I think, historically attended by Commissioners and a few others from the city. This also gives an opportunity for seeing throughout not just North Dakota, but also other states that have come and hosted some of their, or intending to come potentially to this area to bring some of their business to North Dakota and allows for interactions with all of those industries within the oil industry. And I think historically that the Commission and some city officials have attended that in the past. We do have a booth that we are going to set up for the City of Dickinson to also highlight some of our progress and some of our ongoing jobs that are available throughout the city.
Mr. Winningham, are we coordinating with Stark Development on this booth? Or is it, we're going solo on this?
It has been in coordination with Stark Development, primarily with our Public Works, and we are prepared to collaborate.
Okay.
Also with the Visitors Bureau, we had, I have an upcoming meeting that will discuss this also. The timeline for that is going to be May 11th through 13th is when that event is occurring.
I have a question on the previous item for the Spring Conference, for the NDLC Conference. It's the day of one of our commission meetings. So would there be a chance we could move that meeting so that we wouldn't, so that wouldn't be at the same time? Or how would we go about proceeding with that? Because it's April 20th, so...
I think we can look at, Mr. President and Commissioners, I think we can look at adjusting the time, but I think it'll be a commission, since you approved the original timeline, I think it'll be a commission approval to move that date. But I can look at changing those dates if there's going to be attendance by...
I was going to bring this up at the workshop, but I was, we might as well bring it up now. Also, changing the date in July, because it falls right on, our first meeting in July falls right on that Fourth of July weekend, which typically everybody's gone. So we might have to change two dates right away.
So we'll add that and look to bring that forward for the next commission meeting to adjust the administrative schedule. Make a note of that.
Thank you.
You know, if, like I said, we can have that discussion, so...
And then lastly, on the Order of Business on the agenda, there's a thank you note that was received on behalf of Domestic Violence Rape Crisis Center by the Executive Director, Ms. Johnson, thanking the city for our support for the Domestic Violence Rape Crisis Center. I'll just read through the letter. "This year, 2020, brought many changes to our organization, some good and some not. I'm proud to say that my wonderful staff and I were able to think outside of the box and make changes on almost a daily basis, which allowed us to keep the shelter open throughout the entire pandemic. Again, thank you for continued support of our agency, and I look forward to seeing you in 2021." And that was a letter to the Commissioners. Wanted to read that publicly.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Winningham on the workshop or the conference? We'll go ahead and move into Engineering. We have our 2021 Mill and Overlay Special Improvement District Resolution. This will be handled by interim City Engineer Marshick.
President Decker, Commissioners. Before you use a resolution for the determination of the sufficiency of protest for a 2021 Mill and Overlay Project for the Special Improvement District Number 202101-1, the protest period ended on Friday, February 26, 2021, at 5:00 PM, and the final numbers were 55 protests, which is 19.1% of the acreage of the area, which did not protest out this project. City engineering staff is recommending approval of what will be Resolution 07-2021, oh, 08, excuse me, 08, -2021. Do you have any questions for me on this item?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on Resolution 08-2021, the City Mill and Overlay Project? The initial individuals that showed up that night for the hearing that had their concerns, did city staff, did we send individuals to look at their properties?
We did meet with a few individuals, KJ Staff, James Kudrowski is also here. He met with other property owners that voiced concerns that weren't at the meeting. So we have gone on site, looked at some individual items to see what was shown in the plans versus what we think we need to move forward with. Some of the property on the one high assessment was part of our project maintenance to mitigate some drainage issues. So in that location, we've been, were able to compare concrete that was damaged and needed maintenance versus what was being removed to fix the drainage. And so that did reduce that assessment by around $5,000, I believe. So we can still move forward and work with individual property owners as we move through this process and look at properties individually. This, I believe, goes out for bid if we move forward, and you approve this tonight on the 30th of March.
Just for the general public, if individuals wish to fix delinquent sidewalks or gutters or curbing, they can do it on their own still, right?
That is correct. We just ask that they come forward and do the appropriate permitting and work with city staff to make sure that their contractor is aware of any, like, drainage issues that we're trying to mitigate and to get that work done before our crews would come through for this project so that that work can be coordinated.
Any other questions for city staff on the Mill and Overlay Project? Now I'd look for a motion on Resolution 08-2021.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Heard correctly. Any further discussion, comments? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a report, Mrs. Marshick, from our 2021 Community Rating System Recert.
President Decker, Commissioners, in January, staff requested your approval to move forward with recertification of our activities in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, and we're happy to report that we successfully concluded the annual review process.
And when will we get a determination from them?
We did already.
Oh, so we did? We got that?
We got it, and we are good for another year.
So we're happy?
We are happy.
So far. All right. Good to hear. We're going to have some backing documents for next year's research.
We will. We're hoping we can move forward and do a little more so we can get a better percentage reduction on insurance.
That works for everybody. So that was just a report, so thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on the report? Now we'll move right into our public hearing, and the first item up this evening, we have an employee appreciation. City Administrator Winningham?
And Commissioners, I'm deferring my time to Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. The Dickens Police Department would like to provide an opportunity for staff to be recognized for their lifesaving efforts in serving our community for the following incidents. Officers Canole, Pickstock, and Sergeant Hanson arrived first on scene in response to a male who had fallen over...
who had fallen over while working on Buckskin Drive. Upon officer arrival, the subject had turned purple and was not breathing. Officers began chest compressions on the subject and continued for over 20 minutes, while EMS workers continued to provide medical care. The male was able to begin breathing on his own after several AED shocks and over 20 minutes of CPR. This was all done with the male's family and friends watching the incident. This time, if I'd like to invite Officer Canole, Officer Pitstock, and Sergeant Hanson On the second incident, Sergeant Hanson responded to a choking able client. Sergeant Hanson arrived and attempted to provide the Heimlich. The victim went unresponsive and was lowered to the floor. Sergeant Hanson provided chest compressions, which dislodged the food in the victims, in the victims was choking on, to enable the victim to breathe on his own.
Hey. Nice work. Awesome job, guys.
I have one more. Communication Specialist Andrea Little received a call of an unresponsive male in a vehicle. Andrea directed the caller to remove the subject from the vehicle and guide the caller in performing CPR. The subject was able to regain a pulse while officers and the ambulance service were arriving. This time, I'd like to invite the communication specialist, Andrea Little, to forward, please.
Awesome job.
The Dickinson Police Department does present these lifesaving awards at our annual banquet, but I wanted to bring them in front of the commission and our community to, for them to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Nice work, everyone. The one thing I would also mention that, I know we see a lot of this stuff and it, and people think it's just, well, that's just the regular, what they should be doing, but this is, a lot of times, the persistence above and beyond the call and working very hard. And if you know anybody out there, much like these fine individuals, please submit them to the Stark County Excellence Awards. We just awarded two individuals that saved a young, a baby that was in a rollover, and it was, it was deserving. So I would just say to anybody in a leadership position, if you think your individuals within your organization are going above and beyond, please submit them to this award ceremony for, and it'll be a whole year worth of awards, so, and with a big award at the end. But awesome job. Thank you for all the hard work you guys do. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our other public hearing, and that's our Chapter 29 Amendment. And HR Coordinator Nomenek, you'll be handling that?
Yes. Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. I brought the changes forward to you the last commission meeting for the second reading. There was one small change from then until now. That would be on page 10. It was a small change directed by the Civil Service Commission. On page 10, 18.4, it was, it read employee-paid medical dental account. We took the dental out and put in flexible spending. And then further in the paragraph, there was something that referred to medical dental, and they wanted us to make it consistent and take the word dental out of there as well. So that was the change that you did not see in the first reading, but other than that, everything is the same, and I would take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? This is Ordinance 1709.
Correct.
If we have any questions, Commissioners, before I open up the public hearing. Hearing no questions from the commission, I will open up the public hearing. If there is anyone from the public that wishes to comment on Ordinance 1709, which is our Chapter 29 Amendment, please come forward, state your name. Also, if you need to, and you're watching this online, you can call in at 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You'll hear silence or music on hold.
Anyone from the public? Comments on Chapter 29 Amendment, Ordinance 1709? Again, for those watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the audience has any concerns, and no one has called in, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions, comments on 1709?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will move into planning, and that'll be Planning Director Hadley.
Good item.
Oh, public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think you stand by. Anyone from the public wishes to come forward and has any concerns that are not on the agenda, please come to the podium and let us hear your concerns. And if you're watching online and you want to call in, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public?
Currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Seeing no one in the audience has any comments about any items not on the agenda or on the agenda, and no one has called in, we'll close that public comment section. Now, we'll go to planning. Mr. Hadley, you have a rezone for us?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commission. Before you have the first reading of what will be Ordinance 1710, and this is a zone change from, for on Lot 2C, Block 6, Cook's Edition, 4th, and it's a split zoning situation you can see on the map there. It was, I don't think, known by the applicant and owned by the staff, so we're processing this to clean it up and change it all to an R3 designation. The Planning Commission heard this item on February 24th with no public opposition, and Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval of the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this rezone? There are no questions. I'd look for a motion on Ordinance 1710.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Soboluk to approve 1710.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments on this rezone for Cook's Meadow Hill, 4th Edition? This will be the first reading. Hearing no comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have commission section of our agenda. Are there any items Commissioners wish to talk to or speak of that are not on the agenda? Hearing nothing from the city Commissioners, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Second.
We are adjourned.